Everybody's gonna be, you're gonna do this gallery view, right?
Yeah, we're keeping gallery view.
Is it gonna be a short and sweet today, Paula?
And we'll see, we'll go through the whole agenda, we'll see, everything's being taped now. How are we doing Brett?
We're doing good, I believe that it's posted, but let's wait to hear from Dan to make sure that we are live.
All systems go.
Okay, we're ready to go Paula, thank you.
Okay, thank you both, let's call a meeting to order. Start with a pledge. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America
And to the republic for which it stands One nation under God Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Jenny, can you take the roll call? You're muted.
Ostriaco?
Here.
Collins?
Here.
Coyle?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Owen?
Here.
Yusuf Abramson?
Here.
Bessler?
Here. Okay, public comments, I know we received several in advance, so Jenny, if you want to read those.
We have, I have four and I just received another, the first is from Ginger Pennington. Members of the board, I appreciate that several small revisions were made to the policing contract in response to community emails, thank you for those improvements. But tonight as you vote on the new agreement for school resource officers, I want to ask that you first make two simple changes that can easily be accomplished with the stroke of a pen. I also want to ask that you commit to following up on this issue in the coming months and years with more robust program evaluation that has been done in the past. First in section four, third paragraph. Please strike the phrase that allows SROs to use police powers for nonviolent discipline issues so long as it is requested by the school principal. If the district is serious about minimizing the use of police powers for discipline matters, that phrase should not have been added into the agreement. It's important to note that phrase was not in the original model agreement the district used as a template. Second, please require specialized training for crisis intervention in youth C I T Y restorative justice training and training on the behavior of students with special needs. There are established courses for all of these topics, including a course called A M H T which stands for Adolescent Mental Health Training for School Resource Officers and Educators. The district can absolutely mandate that training if student mental health is indeed one of your priorities, which I believe it is. The chief of police and district administrators insist that they have already been using best practices and that this new agreement just puts it on paper, respectfully, that is not entirely accurate. Statements like that are disheartening to those of us who are hoping the district will take our concerns with the program seriously. It makes it seem as though the changes in this new agreement do not represent a serious commitment to reform and improve district practices but are simply for appearances. Hopefully that is not the case, but the fact that our officers have not yet been trained in restorative practices is just one example which shows we have fallen short of the practices so far. Yes, we are a strong school system and have much to be proud of, but please do not allow that well-deserved sense of pride hurt our ability to engage in critical self-examination. We need to take a critical look at our programs and police's policies to keep making improvements. The new I G A, just like the old one, calls for monthly reports and an annual review, but it still provides very few objective criteria for doing that and no outside objective evaluator. Without a serious and valid review of this SRO program, problems can be spotted and addressed honestly. The district does and has used police for matters that could be handled with school discipline, this is indisputable. We can and should commit to do better even as we celebrate our successes. The next one is from Melissa Galbadoras. Hello, I have three children who will be attending Maine South in the near future. While I understand what an SRO program hopes to gain in terms of two-way communication and trust between law enforcement and students, in these trying times, we cannot afford to make any mistakes. Training of officers for this program is critical, it is essential that officers receive specialized training to deal with students across all needs and possible scenarios. This is a big feat, I understand, but our children are worth it. A hundred ninety thousand to police our schools is extreme, those funds should be going to resources to aid students, not police them. The next one is Samantha Goble, members of the District 207 School Board. I'm writing to express my discomfort with the SRO agreement. I was very disheartened to hear some of the comments from last discussion of the subject which indicated that because not enough people had complained, the program must have support. That is not the case and I would like to add my voice to dissent of dissent to the growing number of those in our community who would like to see the use of SROs in our schools discontinued. I do not support the presence of SROs in our school and would like those positions eliminated. If SROs must remain, I am in agreement with Dr. Ginger Pennington's request for revisions including improved program evaluation and elimination of the school principal loophole and A M H T training for SROs. The next one is from Melissa Halting. I'm a resident of Park Ridge with two children currently in District 64, I'm writing with concerns about use of SROs. I'd like to vote for Ginger Pennington's suggestions already submitted regarding striking language allowing use of SROs to address nonviolent student behavior requiring additional training for resource officers. I believe both suggestions are sensible, common sense improvements. Thank you for your service on the board and attention to this matter. And we just received another, Alice Dobrinsky, before voting on this contract, please consider these points. Many of our kids are in crisis because of this pandemic and we know District 207 social workers are overwhelmed. So why are we spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to put police in nearly empty schools? Why aren't we spending that money staffing up with social workers to serve our students? At the very least, why aren't we mandating best practices training with the SROs? Most of the students will be remote learning, truly the SROs won't have much else to do. If for some reason you must push this through, please make it a one-year contract. Why the rush to make it for five? Who does this benefit? Please put proper evaluation methods in place, our students can't afford anything less. And that is it.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, monthly status of finances, Mary.
So in your packet was a summary of the changes between the tentative budget and the final budget. Many of them are COVID-related. So I, you know, updating of grants, the biggest change was the contingency which we moved from five hundred thousand to two million dollars to cover the unforeseen and unavoidable expenditures for COVID-19. So when the tentative budget was presented, it had a small surplus of just about two million dollars. The final budget has a deficit of about two hundred and twenty-three. But as we all know, we tend to do better than budgets, so I would anticipate that we would end the year with a small surplus. I would say that like many things in the world today, our budget is uncertain. We look at the expenditure side, we look at the revenue side, it seems that things are changing on a weekly basis. This is the best estimate that we can do, given the set of factual information that we have at this time. We continue to monitor it and will always bring changes to the board. So you have electronically both the legal budget, which is the form that the board adopts and that we submit to the state, as well as the narrative budget which provides a nice executive summary as well as detailed information on the various functions and funds and where the district spends its money. So I will entertain any questions that anybody has. This is presented as an update to my, it will be an action item on the September board meeting and it is set to be filed with the state at the end of September.
I have something, Mary, I do know that the budget's been on display since beginning of July and thank you very much for this update. The increase of COVID-related expenses that you've allocated could be as high as two million. Have we gotten any more clarity on any potential reimbursement for those, some of those expenses?
So if you see the CARES Act, so embedded in that CARES Act, which is one of the items that we changed, the six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, we budgeted about three hundred and twenty-four thousand of that for P P E and supplies. Now, what we don't know is how much of that we will go through and how rapidly. Because we, you know, we have hand sanitizer, we have cleaning chemicals and with the schools, it is our plan to sanitize, we bought backpack sanitation equipment that goes in and sprays a mist in every room and for any occupied space, that is one of the steps that we will use to clean that space each and every evening. So, but of course with that chemical, you know, each of those backpacks was over three thousand dollars and the chemicals that go in them are quite expensive as well while we're buying them in bulk. It's everyone's buying this type of equipment and chemicals. So we don't have a good handle on it, we know the types of areas that we will be spending it on, but we just don't know how much we will go through in a given year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, Mary, also the construction update?
Sure, and Rob Martinelli from Pepper Construction is also in the meeting this evening, so this is the official last construction update before school starts. So we will have, not that we didn't have students in the building already, but we will officially have the welcoming of our freshmen tomorrow. So I'm gonna turn this over and let Rob provide an update. And of course there are some very nice pictures that'll go along with the update.
Sure, so we, I hope you can hear me okay, please let me know if you can't. Really, you know, we've wrapped up summer critical work, I think holistically, I think it's easy to say that Maine East and Maine West, the amount of renovation, square footage and complexity renovations at those two schools came to a better conclusion, meaning we finished in an easier process, not as much angst or hard finish as Maine South. Maine South, we, if you've seen the pictures and looked at it, even if you go back and look at last month's report to this month's report, the amount of square footage at that school that we took on really kind of sets us up to to continue on well there and it's just, that's our hardest school to fit into, into a summer program. So apologize Ben, I know, I appreciate the district's continued help to, as we push through and the same thing at the other schools, it's just that, that school kind of, you know, it's probably a little more frustrating than we wanted to be, but, but we're there and and so finishing up, there'll be punch lists, some of the work at all schools will come back in a couple of weeks and finish up punch list activities, so there's done and then there's done, done, you're not coming back. So we have punch list left to do. We're also in the middle of our audit to project in the future, meaning what did we spend on this summer renovation and use that as a proper projection moving forward for the next, next future summer project? So some wrap it up, summer renovation work at all three schools concluded. Maine East will continue on with the Potter Wing renovation project that'll go into December with the goal of flipping that over at the, at the winter break. The Fieldhouse addition at Maine East continues on, so we have not left the building, so to speak. Maine South, we have the courtyard infill project that is ongoing, so we have a little top hat. If you haven't seen Maine South lately, that is now structural steel that's been set in the courtyard and we're renovating space around that courtyard currently, which will be ongoing work as well as the link, the eastern link addition to connect to the A building is also partially enclosed and ongoing. So those are, that's Maine South and Maine West has really just the Fieldhouse precast, they're finishing up precast fabrication now and those precast panels will be by us in September. So really that's the short and sweet, it's been a probably exhausting summer for the school district as well as for us and we appreciate your continued cooperation in working through it.
Rob, quick question. What's the status on a material purchasing status? Are we still good overall in purchasing all the materials? And second quick question is, how is the status of contractors kind of situation? Are we still good, everything is on time? I know Mary mentioned that it's a continuation, all but artists are good to go. But is it, are we safe, are we are good with the contractors and their job effects?
I mean, we've had some delays, which are, you know, and we don't, you didn't, you didn't hire us to mope about delays and to use them as excuses. So we've had some issues come up, we continue to work through them, nothing material-wise out in front of us puts any of the projects in danger. And really we're at the tail end of procurement of bid period one and we're, we're white as finishing now in the process of finishing the next bid period, which is basically the second half of the project, which is the balance of the work. So, so we'll start that material procurement process over at this point. October, November, we'll go out to bid and then we'll have time, additional time to procure materials and probably another two months of material procurement. And, and that'll, that'll give us some extra comfort that really we didn't have because we, we bid and then we went right into COVID, so COVID delays. So we fought a little harder on this last summer's project, Jen, than we will moving forward. So, so right now, no material delays. We believe currently from a bidding perspective, that the market is still very interested in the rest of the work that is coming out, so we believe we'll have a hungry market, which is great and we want the right contractors, obviously, and we want the right dollar value. So we've gotten a lot of interest thus far and people know that the projects are forthcoming.
Well, thank you, Rob, continue doing the great work, we appreciate your service.
Thank you, thank you.
Rob, quick question, I see on the, the report there are issues, neighbor relations, the noise and all that. Has that been taken care of, subsided? Or, you know, do you still have a period of time when it's gonna be, there's gonna be some more noise?
We, we remind all the contractors more at Maine South than anywhere else of the start times and, and really it's, you know, with the houses directly adjacent, we haven't had issues come up lately, but it is a constant reminder, for example, we just set the storm trap or the storm detention system at the backside of Maine South last week and it's, it's a large crane and a lot of heavy equipment coming in and it went pretty seamlessly. So, so it's just a constant, just like wearing a mask is a constant reminder and wearing your hard hat is a constant reminder that the time, the start times and work hours are a constant reminder.
How about our Maine West and Maine East status on those noisy situation?
Not, no, no current concerns and really the Maine East were really pocketed away. You know, there's, there's exterior work happening on the masonry, the masonry walls going up for the field house and the exterior work at, for the time being at Maine, Maine West has subsided, we finished the foundations and finished the parking lot area, so that really got behind us a couple of weeks ago, so no, no current issues, Jen.
Okay, thank you, Rob.
No problem.
Great, the thorough report and all the great work in these.
No problem.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion for number four, COVID-19 Food Service Contract Amendment for 2020, 2021?
They're moved.
Second.
Okay, Mary, did you wanna?
Yes, so our traditional agreement with Quest has us with a rental agreement where as part of the contract, they use a percentage of the profit from the sales to provide the free and reduced lunch meals. Well, now that we're going into a remote setting and the percentage of meals served to students is going to be heavier free and reduced than paid meals in a remote setting, we had to change the contract. The state of Illinois last week allowed for a tiered methodology in terms of what Quest could charge us per meal because the more students that we feed and the more à la carte we can get, there's some cost savings in terms of labor and, and, you know, more, more meals to spread that fixed cost over. So you'll see the tiered approach, you can see that as we start the year with the mostly remote environment, even entering the National School Lunch Program, which is the next agenda topic, we have a net cost of about eighty-one cents per meal. And eighty-one cents for breakfast and seventy-two cents for lunch and then because of rounding, it's a three cents for the paid meals. So this, I think, the state has a waiver that is allowed for a one-year emergency contract procurement for, to allow schools to make adjustments to their contracts and not have to bid them and allows us to enter the National School Lunch Program, which I believe should save us about one point seven million dollars over the cost of what it would be projected to be in terms of these reimbursements that we will receive. So this outlines the amendment with Quest in terms of what they will charge us for meals in each one of the transition models as well as does a little amendment to the contract to outline now the services that they will perform. As an aside, what we're planning on doing is that two-week remote pickup as well. We are, as the memo suggested, we are, have purchased and will be implementing an online meal ordering platform so that every Thursday by midnight, any student who would like to receive a meal for the next week, whether that be free, reduced or paid, will go in and they can order one or more meals and then the next week, Tuesdays and on Thursdays between two and four, they can pick up those meals. So it is a slight change, it's a completely different federal program. I think the buildings have been tremendously helpful because we've had to go through all of the implementation of the applications and everything associated with the National School Lunch Program. So this agenda item is approving the contract agreement with Quest in terms of what we will pay for the meals that we will serve.
Thank you, Mary, any questions or comments? Okay Jenny, can we just record the vote?
Coyle?
Aye.
Ostriaco?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Bessler?
Aye. Okay, do I have a motion for number five, participation in the federal school nutrition program?
Some.
Okay.
Think of our, Jen?
Yes.
Mary, did you want to explain, you touched on it, but.
Yes, so this is the actual, we will be, we've not been in the federal school nutrition programs because there's a lot of requirements on what you have to do. There is a certain component type for every, each and every meal served. So while we've provided free and reduced lunch meals, it hasn't been through this program. So we are looking to get both breakfast and lunch reimbursement by entering this program. Quest will have to submit very detailed menus that comply to the regulations to the state. We will have to have an independent application system for what we do from fee waivers. We will be subject to audit of the meals that we've served. We will have to do a three percent verification on the applications that we receive later in the year. But entering this program will allow us to continue to feed our students who need meals and save the district about one point seven million dollars.
Okay, any questions or comments for Mary?
Mary, I'm guessing that Quest has experience with these contracts, right?
Oh, absolutely, so Quest has many school districts that are on the National School Lunch and the Breakfast Program. So they, they have numerous menus that comply to that, so they went through and picked out those high school code menus that they best fit the program and they're gonna run through them on a cycle basis.
Okay, I obviously, I just wanted to make sure because I didn't want to, I'm glad we're not starting from scratch, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you, I have a question, Mary, if we go down this path, do you anticipate it only being for while we're remote or during our COVID restrictions, or do you think we'll continue to do this?
So once you enter the National School Lunch Program, you are in for the year. So as, when I met with the buildings, one of the things I said is, remember the food trucks? No food trucks this year. So that means for the entire year, we will comply with the regulations that our National School Lunch Program related, because it is a one-year election. So it won't be bad, it will be different. So when we come back this year, students will be seeing some things that are a little different in their food service program for a one-year.
Thank you.
Good question, okay, any other questions or comments? Okay Jenny?
Coyle?
Aye.
Ostriaco?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Bessler?
Aye. Okay, do I have a motion on number six, I G A, Park Ridge Police Department, School Resource Officers?
Some.
Okay.
I think, okay. Carla, did you want to add anything? We've spent a tremendous amount of time on this over the course of many, many months with Carla leading the coordination of the efforts, did you wanna?
Yeah, if I could just, I'll just mention a couple of things. There were some revisions, as you know, in the last version of this that you received. One of them was an update just today to the salary exhibit, I just wanted to make sure you all did receive that. I, you know, I want to say kind of generally, we have had a lot of comments, we've tried to respond again, either through revisions or just responding directly to people writing to us or, you know, giving public comments. You know, this is a process, I do want to make a comment that the document is not the whole SRO program, it's how it plays out. And I think it's important to let everyone know that one of the things that's in, being planned is to have a committee set up with community, parents, students, somewhat similar to the committee that reviews the disciplinary policies to review and assess the SRO program. I think that is an important part of this and will be used going forward, so that's one thing. That is not in the document, it is something that the district would do. We don't need to include that in the document because we're agreeing with the city in the document, so I wanted to mention that. The other thing, I did want to, you know, I just wanted to comment, I heard one of the comments, I think they, they referred to something called the school principal loophole and I guess I want to address that because to me loophole implies, you know, that our principals would be looking for a way to evade a rule and that really misjudges our principals. The provision that they're referring to, the intent of that, I think, was to acknowledge that there's going to be some unique situations where principals might want to call on the SROs. Even in these cases that are what we, what we think of as, you know, kind of routine student discipline issues. They're unique, I, you know, I could maybe come up with some right now or maybe our principals could, which makes it almost impossible to define them or specify them in the document. But I think both, both the district and the city felt that it was important to allow that to happen in unique situations. That being said, I don't think that the exception is gonna swallow the rule. And that seems to be the fear, so I just want to point that out, I don't know if our principals have any thoughts on that, that they'd want to add, but I think that's the basis for the reason that that provision was in there. The only other thing I wanted to say was on the term of the agreement, we did get some questions on this and first of all, this can be terminated anytime with ninety days or by mutual consent of the parties. The document also has quite a bit of flexibility on some things, as, as I think you know, if you looked at the document, training and some of the responsibilities, those can be modified. Not the important roles that the SRO has with respect to our, our own, you know, principals and superintendent and our staff. Those roles are, you know, set in the document and that's a really important part of this. But responsibilities like driver's ed and things like that, that could be adjusted and we did that to make the document better and not have to be amending it or keep it so general that, you know, we didn't have a lot of specificity. So that's really all I had for right now, you know, thank you everyone for looking it over and I know I did get some questions.
So that's really all I had for right now. You know, thank you, everyone, for looking it over, and I know I did get some questions from you, and, you know, thank you.
And Carla, if I could, I heard one of the comments to represent that I had somehow represented that this document simply reflected all the best practices that we already currently do. And if someone interpreted it that way, that certainly wasn't what I intended to say. In fact, you know, like all complex work, what we do in schools is a work in progress. And we've redesigned our entire building leadership staff to reflect that, and that is a commitment to both restorative practices, to our commitment to be a district that is about equity and the service of our students. And so I think the document's aspiration and in communication with Chief Kaminski is that we would evolve everything that we do together. And so the SRO program would in fact evolve as we're trying to continue to evolve practices in the building. So none of this is a static process, and certainly if someone took that meaning, that was not my intent, and rather, it was just a commitment to continue to get better together and really be about the restorative practices that we want to see, and the best practices, many of which, you know, some folks in the community have reflected to us, and we've tried to reflect as well.
Thank you. Any other comments? Questions? Okay, thank you again, Carla, for coordinating the work, Ken, for your comments. Thank you for the board for the amount of time you have spent reading and reviewing and listening to this prolonged process and all the input from many various sources. We greatly appreciate it. Do you want to take the roll call or the phone call?
Sure. Lee?
Aye.
Austriaco?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye. Okay, do I have a motion? Again, thank you all for that. That's an important work, and we really appreciate the community's input as well. And now we are ready for motion to adjourn. Do I have? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you again.